Welcome back to the agenda. Thank you, Dr. Lusa and the administration cabinet also for their leadership and our experience also with working with faculty and staff in time to make sure our school is providing education. It's fairly spontaneous. Again, this board operates on best knowledge as well as at the same time experience. At the same time, we all swore in to follow the rules and we always try to follow the rules because we want to be fair and at the same time be informed when receiving information, but not make judgments at all. Again, the next item is employee organizations. Employee organizations, do we have one or two or three of the representatives here? First come, first served. Your name, please. On the record, who are you representing?
Hello, my name is Rosie Sanchez and I represent the California School Employees Association, Chapter 149. And I just wanted to report that I know that on the agenda tonight is the resolution for classified week and I wanted to share with you that classified, like to celebrate the classified week. And so with that, I don't know if you remember, every year we have a different theme for our dinner dance. We've done Hawaii, we've done fifties, we've done Mardi Gras, we've done a western theme. Last year, we did a taste of Italy. Well, this year, it's a night with the stars Hollywood style. And so I have an invitation for you. We are recognizing our retirees, anybody that has retired any time during this school year, and we are also recognizing our member of the year. We recognize a classified in transportation, a classified in food service, in the clerical. We also recognize instructional aid, maintenance and operations, and special services. So we hope that you can come. It is on May the 16th at Spreckel's Veteran Memorial Hall. And since this is Hollywood style, if you'd like to come as a movie star, feel free. We are going to have prizes for that as well. And we are going to have a special guest that evening, so you won't want to miss this night.
Yeah.
The invitations are going out, make sure you get a donation.
And it's a lot of fun.
And next is Ms. Rodriguez.
Good evening, board members. Carol Rodriguez with SETC. I just wanted to say that even though a lot of people are still on this year, the teachers have been thinking about next year, teachers have just turned in their position preference forms for next year. So we're already starting to look ahead. But as for the year and now, teachers are starting on testing. There's been some glitches, some parts of the test that are a little bit different. It's all, it's been kind of a learning curve because of the new computerized testing, but that's all began and that's going to take us the next several weeks. So that's kind of the, I think, probably the biggest hope for us right now.
Thank you very much. Do we have a representative from substitute teachers? In the audience? No? Say none. Okay. So the next item, superintendent, you have a slot.
For the audience, I would like to share another great news, I think. NASA program, Salinas City Elementary School District, four, five years ago was the first one, and still the main one, with NASA, working with the NASA project that sponsored Cardinal College. And this last Friday, nationwide, they're doing a documentary about a program, CIMA, where common core standards are addressed. This is after school and Saturdays for students focused in science, mathematics, engineer, aerospace, education. So this Saturday, we taped in Corona Meadows and it was wonderful. Thank you to the school principal. She provided, she hosted the taping. Wonderful. We had teachers, students, parents, administrators. And I think it's going to be soon, we don't know the date yet, but it's a nationwide program celebrating Salinas City. Mainly is to open doors, to open the mind of our students, especially girls and all the students in general, really. It's an attempt nationwide to attract students into the math and science and engineer areas that we need desperately in the country. So it was wonderful. The board member was represented by Janet Barnes. Would you like to add something? Thank you for attending, please.
Well, I just wanted to add, I was fortunate enough to go and privileged enough, actually. It was really interesting to go from class to class and see what the kids were doing. Just one little story, and I want to thank the teachers. The teachers worked really hard on this. It was very well organized. And I think there were like 125 kids. Veranda and Lincoln has the same program on Saturdays. And the other thing is next Saturday is the parents are coming. So if you get a chance to go to Veranda next Saturday, you can see everything being interacted with the parents and the students home. But one first grader, it was so funny, they were writing down, I imagine, I think, I wonder on pieces of paper, and they were roaming around the room, and one little first grader said, "I wonder if there are farms on the moon." And I love that because it's like, okay, if you start thinking about it, well, if there's no farms on the moon, then you can't eat on it, so probably you can't live on it. So, but I mean, just the things that children say, I was just really impressed. So thank, thank everybody who was working on it.
Do we have board members up here to my right? We'll start off.
First, I'd like to thank Mr. Ryan for opening up Lincoln School for the better board. Mostly it was for the superintendent. We discussed just what we would like for the superintendent. We sent all the information, or they sent the information to Dr. Cruz. There was a lot of teachers there, retired teachers, a lot of people attended. I think it was a good thing. Thank you.
Okay. Next, please.
I have several things I'd like to say. One, it was Dr. Reddick. I want to thank you and Anna Paquette, I'm wherever you are at there. I just want to thank you because one of the things that you did on one of the issues that we have to discuss, you left, you gave us the school site council minutes. And it's very rare that we see the school site council minutes, and I would just like to ask other principals to give the whole board an opportunity to see it because it did not, it gives us, it gave great information about what you're doing, what you're spending your money on, what your hopes are, et cetera, as far as curriculum is concerned. So thank you very much for doing that, plus we can see where the money is being spent. And also, who's attending and who has successful school board, I mean, school site councils and who might have some challenges. Also, the second thing I wanted to ask Mr. Stratton, could you tell us about the accident at Roosevelt? Can you give us a little update? It's not even going to know what happened this weekend.
I'd be happy to. For those of you that don't know anything about the accident, I think you can hear me from here. About 1:15 Sunday morning, a 19, or 2015 Mustang driven by a 21-year-old, apparently inebriated, cruised into the northeast corner of our multipurpose room at Roosevelt School. High rate of speed, he actually penetrated a huge hedge, knocked over a bush that had about a four-inch diameter trunk, then knocked over a chain link fence of six feet with two posts, continued into the corner of the building, and if it was a new building, it probably would not have survived. 90-year-old redwood structure, it won, the Mustang lost, but it destroyed the corner of the building. It took off a lot of plaster. The impact was so great, it pushed the whole northern wall into a door jamb where we now have to torch and cut the hinges off and kick or cut the door out for the inspection by the engineer tomorrow. The car then continued and knocked down more fencing. It broke two pieces of the perimeter of the pre-kind or play box that holds the wood chips in. So having said all that now, apparently the driver's in critical condition. He was apprehended, the perpetrator was. Went into Tivodad, car is totaled. We were most blessed that no one was there, no one was hurt. Terry Ryan and Darren Fort responded within 10 or 15 minutes of the call. We were able to seal the building off, block it all up, and we started school as usual today. There will be some impact in that. We were going to, we're going to fence off the preschool area so we can use that, and we will be able to use part or all of the multipurpose facility except when there are some inspections or some remediation. And as an old building, it will have some asbestos in the plaster and some lead paint. And when we do that, we'll protect everyone to make sure there's no contamination anywhere. It'll probably take from now until June to repair the building. Our estimate without the engineer's input is about $100,000. The only known thing there is how much remediation of hazardous materials that we'll have. With that, any questions you have? You're welcome.
The last thing I have, I'd like to ask Mrs. Willingham a couple of clarification questions if I could, please. And I basically would like to know about the whole, the increase of new intermediate to advanced Spanish speaking additions that we have this year, especially those who do or do not have waivers and how that affects the teachers. I'm a little bit worried about the English-only teachers at the beginning level, what's going to happen to them, and perhaps you could tell us the criteria that's used to change the levels and what options the teachers might have to alleviate the changes of grade level.
Would you like me to respond to that now?
If you could, please.
Thank you. For several years, we have identified the levels of Spanish that our teachers have, and we have tried to individually develop plans for the teachers that would increase their level of Spanish. For instance, if someone comes in with a beginning level of Spanish, we try to get them to take enough Spanish to be at an intermediate level. Part of our master plan, and please correct me if I'm wrong here, Mary, part of our master plan does say that for our students who are beginners, either ones or twos, they need to have a teacher who has intermediate level of Spanish. And so as our demographics have changed, we have tried to staff to make sure that we have that kind of coverage at each grade level. The other thing that we have tried to do is we have tried to be prepared, if our parents request waivers, and we need to put an alternative program class in place. So therefore, you will see in our staffing that in our primary grades, we try to assure that we have someone, we identify a staffing position that would have a B class. Many, many times, those positions are, can be staffed with a B class or someone with advanced, and we do not end up with parents requesting waivers, and so we do not put an AP class in place. Teachers, basically, most of our teachers, with the exception of teachers who are very experienced and have been with us for a very long time, came into the district with what we call a bilingual training plan. And this dates back to probably 20, 25 years ago. If you look at the new teachers, I'll speak just for the last 10 years. Our new teachers coming in, we generally start out with a, say, from 10 to 15 of those teachers coming in with beginning Spanish. If you look at where those teachers are at this point, they have moved to intermediate for the most part. When we look at the staffing, the number of intermediate and B class positions, that's really, that's really a goal. We also look at the number of ones and students who are at a one or a two level to see whether or not we can get by with, let's say, one teacher with intermediate and one teacher with beginning Spanish. I guess this is a long way, the long way around of saying that there are several factors that go into it. We have not displaced teachers who do not have intermediate Spanish. We are continuing to hire new teachers at the beginning level. We do monitor and try to make sure that they are taking some Spanish so that their level of Spanish is increasing to be able to better support our kids.
Just one quick thing. What is a tipping point number with ones and twos to add another one, a position of advanced or a...
There, there is not a specific number because it somewhat depends on the size of the school. At some sites, we could get, we can get by with one teacher with intermediate and the other teacher could have beginning level Spanish. It depends on the size of the school, the demographics of the school. Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mel.
Well, I just wanted to say, thank you to the maintenance department. I got a call on Saturday, or was it Sunday? This weekend, anyway, to let me know what was happening and the progress, and I really appreciate that, and I appreciate your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As for myself, I got a chance to visit the schools during the break. And visiting the schools during the break, what I was looking at is the landscaping, the outside look, and that is the cleanliness and everything, like trees needed this, trees needed that, or we're doing good at these schools. And I can compare now, number of schools, but we still need to get our landscaping going and becoming greener as much as possible. Even though we're under a drought mandate, we can do that other ways. Thank you very much. Just wanted to let you know that I've been out there too during the break. Thank you.
Yeah. We're going to go into Dr. Lusa and respond to some of their concerns and questions that came up previously in the last meeting.
Okay. Title one, there have been many comments regarding title one insinuating that the district is not doing it right. So the only thing I can say is, this district, as well, I have been here 24 years, we have been following the rules exactly as the state requires. We follow the state guidelines and we work here to the pleasure of the board of education. For the last, I don't know, Dylan, would you like to, I guess?
Sure.
Maybe a little more, I guess. Come on, you're in charge of title one. Give us a synopsis of how title one works.
Hi, good evening, Dr. Lusa, board members, cabinet and audience, Amida Huerta and I'm the categorical coordinator of principal and special assignment. And yes, like Dr. Lusa says, we follow federal regulations in terms of how to disperse the money for title one schools. In the, last year, the threshold was 75 percent low income, and the school had more than 75 percent students that qualified for reduced lunch or free lunch. They qualify for title one. The board of education, our local board of education lowered the threshold to 40 percent. So yes, we're monitoring. We have, the question was against last, about Lincoln. Lincoln just became, they have a 44.86 percent of students low income this school year. This is according to CBIT from October of this school year. We're going to continue to monitor. We monitored for two consecutive years, and then if they continue with this amount and percentage, then we will follow the title one procedures in the school. The personnel, teachers would like, and the community parents would like for that particular school to become title one. It will be up to them. Okay? So we will follow for two consecutive years. So this is your one, and next year, if they continue to have this amount, then we will follow protocol. And currently, our language, language development center just moved to that, to the school site. So if those kids, many of those kids come from title one schools, so we're monitoring. If those kids were to move to another school site and if the percentage lowers, then we don't want to give funds because what happens is that with title one funds, they hire people, personnel, they hire, they bring programs, and if it's not sustainable, what's going to happen? So that's why it's so important that we follow, monitor for two consecutive years. If this is the, if this continues, we'll definitely, if the school, teachers and parents are ready for it, we'll definitely come to this. Okay? Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much for the information. And Dr. Lusa, you still have the floor.
Yes. Another concern that we had last year, I mean, last meeting, was regarding some questions about how the students in dual immersion are doing, what kind of data we have. And at this time, I would like to ask Lydia, you can show the last two years that we had some data, this is district data. We don't have data in the last three years because the state test is not available and is pending, and we will retake it next year, hopefully. But the year, when we did the analysis in the year 2010, basically, this is the same, the same slide that we used back then. A comparison between students in dual immersion versus students not in dual immersion versus all students, all this is Corona Meadows Palace with dual immersion in those years, and compared versus all students in Salinas City. So it was evident back then in 2010 that, well, the state data results show that dual immersion students are doing, overpassing the rest. So in year 2012, Lydia, okay, this is the data from year 2012, and same population, same group of, same categories, I should say, and you see the data. We hadn't, we haven't done, but I think with the state testing place again, we will be having this analysis again by program, by school, so on and so forth. Okay, that's my comment regarding dual immersion in our district. Thank you.
Yes, sir. What I want to do is, you can speak during public comment when that happens next. Can you wait that long? Okay, thank you very much. Again, any other concerns or questions that kind of, that individuals desiring to, go ahead, Doctor.
I think, I don't know if it's up to the board of education to make some statement about Brown Act, although there were some concerns about the Brown Act last, not fine with Brown Act last meeting.
Let me speak to that if I can. You know, this board is always, has always, and continues to respect the Brown Act, at the same time, put our service on the table. And many times, we've been to the sites in support of the faculty, in support of the classified employees, the cabinet, the administration, and the public at large. And at that case, stating that, that means that we are doing our best and we're continuing to stick to the Brown Act. Thank you.
Now, I'm going to go over to item number six, which is individuals desiring to address the board, and these are items that are not on the agenda, not on the agenda, and I want to underscore that because we're here to listen, and we're here to take action, and we're here to make some very serious decisions as we go forward. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ash Brown. I'm the SETC Vice President. Now, please do not take this the wrong way. I like dual immersion, and if dual immersion was part of Sherwood School, I would be in favor of it. So this has nothing to do with dual immersion. What it has to do is with statistics. I'm not a fan of statistics. Not too long ago, the charter school that came showed a lot of statistics, but it didn't talk about what kind of students they had, what kind of students they picked and choose and chose. When I see these statistics, I think about the students that attend those schools and where they come from and who their parents are and how the level of education they have. You know, Lincoln School, we know the parents that take their kids, they're highly educated. So when you compare those kinds of families with that kind of education to the rest of the schools, I don't, I don't like those numbers. They're not accurate, and that's just my point of view. Statistics can be manipulated depending on what factors you're talking about. Thank you.
Sean Henry. Los Padres and...
Corona Meadows and Los Padres.
Lincoln Water Link.
My name is Sean Henry. I'm a parent with students in the district. In terms of the concerns, it was a real basic question that I believe was asked of Area Four trustee Janet Barnes in terms of title one, whether the resolution that was passed in October would allow Lincoln to vote for themselves since they're way over the threshold. I don't know where the monitoring process of two years come from. I know we can't ask questions or people ask questions, but I don't know where that is in the regulations. It was basically, do you guys have to vote again to allow Lincoln to decide for themselves, or did the resolution that passed in October need it? When we spoke at that time, it was very much pointed out, I believe, by another member, Daniel McCall, that Lincoln should have been part of the option because it was a 39.4 something percent. I think we got a very similar answer, well, we're kind of monitoring. The estimate that the district gave was it was going to be, I think, 206 students at Lincoln. There's almost 300, 290. It was over 45 percent. So we're not talking about statistics, we're talking about 300 students, that that school should have a choice to decide or not. Three schools were given a choice by the school board to follow the state and federal regulations, which you previously had was the 75 percent that you had determined. So the federal government allows you to make other decisions, but the state and federal standard was 40 percent. And not only that, it was very much pointed out that 35 percent could still become an entire school-wide title one school. So they give you an exemption up to 35 percent. So this moving back and forth, that's not going to be a concern. Your estimates were way off. 100 students, almost 100 students that are low income. So Lincoln may decide not to even use it, just as I believe Laurel would and University Park did, but Mission Park, 80 percent of the staff did vote for it and are going to be using it and are planning to be using it and putting a plan together next year to have after-school programs primarily for our most needy students, English language development, whatever's needed, and they're coming up with that plan. So it's not a whatever issue, Mr. Lusa. I mean, that kind of response from a superintendent, I really, I didn't want to address you that way, but it was, like, I can't believe what I heard. What I originally wanted to talk about was follow-through. On March 9th, I had talked about the SARC, and you finally found out that the financial figures that you were giving to the public were misleading. And as Janet Barnes said, you know, getting the meeting notes from the school site council was very important to see where the monies are being spent, but the community still does not know where the money's being spent. It's okay if somebody would have addressed it in this meeting, just basically say that your first two guidelines wouldn't be met. I can understand that it's a lot of work to do. I can understand that it's a lot of work to do, but to just gloss over what you put up on the board and said you'd be talking about in this meeting today is just unprofessional.
Thank you very much. For three minutes, thank you. And that was so nice. Okay, we're going to be going into item number seven. Okay. We're going to give you three minutes apiece, okay?
Buenos dias, miembros de la Mesa Directiva. Muchas gracias por darnos la oportunidad de venir a dar nuestras opiniones.
Good evening, board members, and I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to present our opinions.
Mi nombre es Silvia Huerta, y ustedes me conocen por años, nada más ahorita. Me conocen yo creo de cincuenta años aquí en el distrito, porque soy una madre preocupada por la educación de todos los niños, no nomás por mis hijos.
My name is Silvia Huerta, and I'm certain that a lot of you are familiar with me. I've been in this district and in the community for over fifty years, and I'm a very concerned mother of students in this district.
Nosotros estamos pidiendo a ustedes que queremos doble inversión en todas las escuelas. Al que no les guste trabajar donde hay doble inversión, que se puede ir a donde quiera. Hay muchos distritos, hay muchos pueblos donde se vayan, porque ya estamos cansados de tener a nuestros hijos como, como si fuera una persona que no vale, que no mandan dinero para su educación.
We are asking that the dual immersion program be implemented across the district, and for those staff members or people that do not like the program and do not support it, they can go and work in other districts. We are tired of seeing our children not receiving the services.
También como Mesa Directiva, que ustedes están cinco personas aquí sentados, porque nosotros los pusimos, también quiero que no anden haciendo grupos en las escuelas para hablar tocante al nuevo superentendente como madre, como comunidad. Yo tengo todo el derecho de elegir el nuevo superentendente, no que lo elija la mesa.
Also, as board members and the five people that compose it, who we elected to sit in your seats, I don't like that groups are being created in different schools and talking to plan on selecting a new superintendent. As a mother, it is also our right to select the superintendent.
Yo el otro día pasé a la escuela Lincoln, y yo vi un grupo de personas, y vi un miembro de la mesa que está sentado aquí, y no me gustó. Porque un miembro de la mesa va a estar en un grupo donde hay personas. Yo no sé qué estarían hablando, porque yo no me bagué. Yo nada más vi el grupo y vi uno de la mesa de ustedes.
A few days ago, I drove by Lincoln School, and I happened to notice a group of people along with one of you members of the board. I don't know what was being talked about. I didn't have the opportunity to stop and say, but I don't feel that that is appropriate.
Next, please.
Hi, good evenings. My name is Jodi Realaza, and I currently am teaching a five-six combo at Limón Vista School, and I'm coming on a totally different note. I was coming about math curriculum adoption. We're adopting new math curriculum, and K-5 has a great one called Go Math, and sixth grade doesn't have it on the table, and I understand what the pitch process was for that, or at least as it was explained to me by the grade level member who attended.
With Dr. Lusa's respect, we have this on the agenda, and will be...
I don't have an agenda. When I came in, it was so crowded.
This is the board agenda.
Okay, no, I know, I didn't get an agenda, because it was so crowded when I got in.
Okay, but still, we're going to bring it up during the meeting.
You may not answer her question at that meeting. She has a right to ask her question.
When it's going to be on the agenda?
No, I don't have an agenda, that's what I was saying.
We're not talking about your agenda, our agenda.
Right, and I'm saying I don't have a copy of your agenda.
Please, provide her action under curriculum, under curriculum. It's going to be math.
Okay, then that's fine.
Thank you very much. Didn't mean to click you in, but then to educate you that we have it on the agenda, that's it. Thank you. Next, please.
Yes, thank you. This is my first board meeting, so I apologize if I don't do it right. So I am a Lincoln parent, I'm a dual immersion parent, proud member of my neighborhood, and I'm also educated, but I worked hard to be educated. And I'm wondering if maybe after the meeting, someone could come up to me and give me insight on why, why that's a bad thing. I enjoy what we're doing, and I like the idea that we're waiting and monitoring before we vote on the being a Title I school. I understand there's a lot of oversight that happens if you become a Title I school. If our school can avoid that, I'd like to see that happen, but I just, I felt, there seems to be some animosity, and I do appreciate the work that the board's doing, and I'm a proud member of Lincoln. And I just wanted to say that. I don't know, it seems like it's awfully early in the meeting to be kind of hating on the program so much, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Hi, Frank Gardner, father of two children in the district. So what I heard regarding the Title I fund allocation from Dr. Lusa is that allocation of the funding is at the discretion of the board, whether to give the teachers and the parents that opportunity to vote on it, because ultimately it is a school choice. Then we hear of this two-year monitoring requirement. You know, by now, us coming here every month, I'm sure you know that we're big fans of due process, so if there is in fact a monitoring requirement, we'd like to see what the controlling document is. Where's the policy that the board has ratified and set forth for their, your administrators to follow that sets forth that that's the process for allocation of funds? So I guess see a copy of that document, but great. I also had a couple of other things that I wanted to follow up on. I too, I also want to thank Mr. Larison for coming to our community meeting. It was at Lincoln School on March twenty-ninth, it was well-attended. He sat with community members, he listened to their concerns, he expressed some concerns of our own, it was great. That's the kind of back-and-forth dialogue that we, that we really do appreciate as community members and parents. Even though the district did not support the meeting, it was, it was open to everyone who wanted to come. There was no exclusion. Actually, Mr. Ryan was there, I'll thank him as well for bringing the translation equipment so that we can communicate with everyone. And I think the opportunity for community engagement was really well-received by the people who did come out. We did an anonymous evaluation afterward, we asked every person in attendance some open-ended questions about the type of things people want to see so they can be more connected to their schools. And, you know, I wish I had more than three minutes, because there were some really, really good ideas on those forms. The one that stood out is to have more quarterly meetings, or getting the district out there talking to people, understanding what's important to them. Those LCAP questions that you put up on your website, I got a robo-call over the weekend, and I did the survey, but those questions you're asking people are just so nonspecific to the point where you have no choice but to say, of course retaining qualified staff is important. You know, of course, you know, instructional materials in the classroom, that's very important. I'd be crazy to say it's not important. But you don't really get to the heart of what people are thinking when you do it that way. In contrast, when the teachers put out their surveys, when BBB puts out a survey, we ask open-ended questions, and this reflects the pulse of our community. So what I want to do is give you a copy of what we handed to, what we sent to Dr. Cruz, and there's a lot of good information on here. These are the core values that our community voted on, that we would like to see in a new superintendent. And on one hand, I'm encouraging you to get out and hear it for yourself, but just talk to people, but, you know, we decided to do it for you, so I think this document is an accurate reflection of our community's values, so I'll just leave it.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Gabriela Perez, teacher at Mission Park School. I have to say that I feel really saddened to come here every board meeting and get the same hateful parades every time about the dual immersion program. I personally am quad-lingual plus, so I would definitely support multilingualism, but we had a wonderful presentation last time by the experts on how this dual immersion program works, and what kind of a population we need to set up a successful program of that kind. And they specifically stated that you have to have either a half English-speaking population and a half Spanish-speaking, or a third English, a third both, and a third Spanish, in order for this program to work. So to come here and hear every single time that it's just the teachers that don't want to do it, it is a fact of a demographic that is either suitable for the program or it is not suitable for the program. And I would really like for people to understand that. The presentation last time pointed that out very succinctly, that the program is not successful if you enact it with only Spanish speakers, or if you enact it with only English speakers. They made it very, very clear that it has to have a critical mass of the opposite language in order for the children to have that native speaker input of here. And if that is not there in certain schools, then it is not possible to implement that program in those schools. And so I don't quite understand where that point was missed at the last board meeting in that presentation.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
I think I'm the last one. I'm just going to add on to that, she took everything I was going to talk about for dual immersion. I have no problem with dual immersion at every single school. That would be amazing, but we don't have the population. Also, if you go back to the same presentation, the number-one hurdle we have is finding qualified teachers to teach those students. If we can't have the teachers that are going to teach those students in that, in the dual immersion program, we can't have a program either. And we have a hard enough time finding teachers as it is. Pat travels all over the place trying to recruit and bring people to the central coast. They get eaten up by the Bay Area, they'd rather go there. I don't know why they wouldn't want to be in these beautiful fields, but it's very difficult to attract qualified, highly bilingual, Spanish-speaking, bicultural, all those, any kind of teacher. And it's getting even harder as the years progress with all the hate on teachers we have right now. Who, what young student would want to go into the teaching profession when they get attacked on a regular basis? Not only in the media, but in our own school districts. We need to start looking at that first, also. But the teachers are all full dual immersion, they have nothing against it, we don't even vote on it, we have nothing to do with that program. We don't say yes, we don't say no. If we have the teachers to do it, we would be happy to let the teachers do it, and the parents want it, let them do it, but find qualified teachers to support those students. If not, it's not going to work.
Thank you, thank you very much. Last speaker, in response to the messages, is this district's going to reach out even deeper out there in workforce elements? Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Lusa, I'm board, I've never been up here before. Buenos dias a todos. I'm Agustina Leva, I teach for Fred dual immersion, and this is the first time I step up to the podium at a meeting. I think this is the first time I've called me at a meeting, too, I'm not rushing off to my baby. But I just wanted to say, thank you, I didn't catch your name. Lorraine, you made me feel so important, because you made me feel one of a kind. I am a dual immersion teacher, I love doing what I do, and I just wanted to say that I, I have no statistics, I have no, nothing to back me, I just, I'm having an amazing time teaching my wonderful fourth-grade dual immersion class. I'd like to thank Dr. Lusa and those of you, Janet Barnes, who have come into my classroom to see our work. We just go every morning from eight to three, and we're working hard, and my students love it, I love it, and I have had the opportunity to work with the LDC program, with Mr. Lumley and Ms. Santa Cruz's class, and those students are a great example for my dual immersion class, and I enjoy working with the LDC, and thank you for having them at our school. I wanted to thank my principal for his support, and I have an amazing team, and they're not here this evening, but I just wanted to let you guys know that good things are happening, and some of us are happy. But I love what I do, and thank you so much.
Next item is number, which is number seven. What is your pool item? What is your pool item? Board members?
I would like to pull item five A just for questions, not for separate votes.
Say again? Say again? Say again.
Five A, I'd just like to pull five A and maybe ask Dr. Reddick a question about it.
Anybody else have any items to pull, other than that? Okay. We have, okay, we have the number one first, and we'll get back to you. Okay? To come up here in forty more. To pull nine of, what is your pool item that you want to pull, or attentive?
I would have a chance to, to five A also.
Say again?
I just have a question, and maybe you can follow up with your questions.
Five A, it's going to be pulled.
It was really, it was really interesting to read about it, about the mine research institute and what you're composing, and I was very, very impressed with it and all the data that you gave, so thank you for that. I do have a question, though, because in addition to what we have here, you gave us the statistics of what's happening at El Gabelan, and I'm not sure if it's indicative of other schools, but the scores were incredibly low, and I know that you're doing this in order to improve them. Can you tell me, what did you think, what do you think is the reason that the scores were so low, and why, and why did you pick this particular program to alleviate that?
Great questions. First of all, there's not one reason for the scores being so low. I think the change, I'm the fourth principal in five years, and there'll be a new one next year, unfortunately, but that's a big issue. I believe as an organizational psychologist that the school is in crisis, and it needs to be looked at as a, in crisis mode, and it's not going to improve as long as you go up the principals, and right now, teachers are leaving the school. So, enough of that. The other answer is there's no math intervention program at all offered at the school, so...
And why, why is that? Because we have funds within the schools for reading and math interventions?
Right now, there, there has been nothing, and for a number of years, apparently.
But what about the school-site council? Don't they approve or...
They do, and they did approve this, but it's never, I don't know if there's never one been proposed to them, or what, but for as long as, I've talked to other teachers about it, and they said that there hasn't been one there for years. And which you and I both know are totally inappropriate with our TI requirements, that we have been non-compliant for a number of years, it sounds like.
That answer. Yes, that's my, Mrs. Magri, just had a question.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lusigan?
Although Dr. Reddick seems has given a lot of information, I really am urging the board to vote against this. Dr. Reddick is resigning, she has resigned, and there will be a new principal next year, as well as whatever the new math adoption that is going to begin next year. And I'm just concerned that a new principal coming in with this program, not with the base knowledge that Dr. Reddick seems to have about this program, that it might be kind of wasted money. I'd like to see more of the new person be able to put something together that is a total package, because like I said, this, with this program, this is...